Mic phone's all turned up?
They're on.
Thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for November the 11th, 2020, little after 6:00. We're at City Council Chamber 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have one public hearing that involves license fees. Roll call, please.
Pullman, present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Present. We'll start off by offering a prayer, but Councilmember Tim Nab filed by a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take out this moment tonight on Veterans Day to remember those who have fought and given the ultimate sacrifice to our country for everything that they accomplished in service to our country and service to our freedom. If we will a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Councilmember Nab. We have no special presentations this evening. Go to audience citizens. What's the line? We had one gentleman sign the book, Mr. Jim Lottoman. He believe, I believe he's out in the hallway. I believe Mr. Vanderhorst did talk to Mr. Lottoman.
I did. He had some concerns about the railroad tracks at East Avenue before Maple. So I'll report that through Mr. Angel.
Okay, so you'll take care of that, and he's okay with you taking care of that. Thank you. Okay, so just so individuals know, we have Mr. Lottoman talking with Tom Vanderhorst right now in a session about the CSX railroad tracks. Mr. Tideman, did you receive any emails? Because that's what we encourage people to do, is to send emails for audience citizens. Did you receive any this particular week?
This particular week, no, but I wanted to address some business from last week. The City Council received a petition from residents on Northeast Street regarding an aggressive dog in their neighborhood. I'll save council, I provided a copy for council, but I'll save them, save you all the time of reading it at length. But the summary of it is that there's a property on Northeast Street that has a aggressive dog in their front yard that it's scaring a lot of the youth in the neighborhood and it's making a lot of people uncomfortable. These folks are requesting the city to take some sort of action towards this in some way. They provided a history of incidents with the police and the Butler County Dog Warden. I myself have contacted the Dog Warden Division and they have very strict rules or laws on when they can act with aggressive dogs. So, and their, their rules with that are, one, a dog leaves the premises that they're protecting and is at large, and if it hurts or bites someone, or if it hurts or kills another animal or dog, that is when they get involved. It has not gotten to that point yet. However, I've also explored what our current health ordinances say about animals, and I think if they wanted to act with a barking dog or a loud dog in their neighborhood, they could, they could call the police for a noise complaint with that, and maybe that could keep the dog within the backyard or inside the house. So there is not much that we can do per our ordinances at the moment, and that, and I wanted to share that with you before providing a full response to our residents.
Looks like they have a plan, idea. This is for us to consider for possible future report, if you like?
Right. Their, their plan, for the most part, is keeping track of individual calls on properties and instituting a fine system and using that fine system to, at the, you know, at the worst, rehome, rehab, or possibly euthanize dangerous animals or dangerous dogs in their neighborhoods.
All right. Thank you for that report on the petition. There are no others this past week, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All right, and I'll go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, meeting minutes, all caucus reports, receiving file reports, an informational report regarding changes to our zoning ordinance format and text, which is a pretty impressive undertaking done by the planning department. And they've succeeded in the charts and all, as well, we'll take a look at if you have to do any type of development. All righty, there is no committee of the whole. I'll accept the motion. The council received the reports, the consent agenda, and concur in their recommendations.
A move.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. For the record, just for the record, the Cox agenda included establishing a Gulfview Drive, actually a great financing district, annual budget appropriation ordinance for 2021 recommendation regarding medical hospitalization insurance, and lastly, a contract for new water service and sanitary sewer lateral. All right, now go to the public hearing. And I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and a public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 609. Let's record reflect, the council did receive an email last week regarding the purpose of this public hearing, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct.
And I believe you sent to us an actual response that I think you gave to that, to that email.
That's correct. And after I informed them of the changes that were made by, in cooperation with Mr. Vanderhorst and the Health Department, they did respond back saying, you know, they said thank you, or they acknowledged that we made these changes and lowered the prices.
And I believe we have a presentation about this. One street of public hearing issue, topic into the record, and then we'll proceed with the public hearing.
A public hearing regarding amending sub-paragraphs A through G and I of section 1733.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations, repealing said existing sub-paragraphs, City of Hamilton, applicant.
Okay. Is someone from the Health Department is going to do a presentation at this time?
Yes, that'd be Ms. Kami Mitrione.
Hey. Kami, if you'll just come up and give us your name and your occupation for the record, and then receive your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kami Mitrione. I'm a Health Department Sanitarian, Public Health Inspector, and I'm here on behalf of Kay Farrar, who is out of the office at this time, on a much deserved vacation this week. I have a slideshow presentation that she put together, and it talks about the process that we use to determine our license fees annually for our state mandated programs that are food service operations, retail food establishments, swimming pools and spas, and also body art and piercing operations. The process that we use is mandated by state code. There's several of them listed up here, the Ohio Revised Code. Next slide, please. A lot of, we, we collect data the previous year before, so we are using 2019 data to put into the cost methodology to determine our 2021 license fees. And these are the parameters that go into them, things like salaries, the number of operations that we have, the number of hours spent, that sort of thing. Next slide, please. There's also anticipated costs for possible raises, some administration fees, that sort of thing. We use, and then you can go to the next slide, please. We use a spreadsheet that is provided by the Ohio Department of Health. It has some embedded calculations. It's basically a worksheet. We enter the data, and it gives us a final number, and that final number is the highest amount that we can charge for the license fee. So that includes all of our costs, and it's designed to not make a profit, to break even. Let's see, so then we will go to the next slide, and this is just a slide that shows our proposed fee for 2021 for our food service operations, which include everything from a sit-down restaurant to a gas station grocery store. There's different levels based on the size of the operation, as well as the type of food processes that they do, hence level 1 to 4. There's a temporary license, there's a mobile license, and there's a vending license fee. So you can see what we are proposing to charge for the 2021 year, and you can see our fees from the year before, just as a comparison, as well as a few other local cities in Butler County, Norwood City, Hamilton County. And then the next slide are the swimming pools, similar setup, slightly different, but the proposed fees are at the bottom, and the, the fees from last year at the top, compared to a few of our neighbors like Butler County, City of Springdale, Norwood. There, in addition to the fees that are listed that we will charge, there are some state fees that we collect on their behalf. So it's $80 for the first pool and $55 for the spa, the baby pool, the waiting pool, that sort of thing. And then last but not least, tattoo and body art, piercing establishments, also permanent makeup, tattoos, microblading eyebrows are pretty popular these days, that sort of thing, all fall under that category, and our proposed fee for 2021 is $300, and that is $100 higher than last year. And then I just provided one local jurisdiction, Butler County, so that you see what they charged in 2020. So, do you have any questions or comments, anything you need to know, anything I left out?
Vice Mayor Pullman.
The fees are all due are at different times right now for next year?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The fees, are they due at different times now?
They are. I believe the tattoo and body art, the year goes January to December, so the applications are sent out towards the end of the previous year.
Okay.
For food services, they, their license year is March to February 28th. And so those license applications get sent out at the beginning of the year in February. And then for swimming pools, their seasons generally are, you know, summer for most of them, but I do believe there, they have to be licensed, that process starts before Memorial Day in May. So it's slightly offset for each of those, honestly, yeah.
Because I think one of the questions that we have is coming from the tattoo business and that they're going to have to pay this fee, and it's often, I mean, it's, it's $100, I understand, and I appreciate you cutting it down for them, because I think it was $350 before, so we saved them $50 there. But I think also I would have to ask Tom if we could just kind of, you know, just after Dwyane's announcements, if everybody's kind of heard them, there's some strict things that are probably go on that we're going to have happening in the next couple of days or next weeks. I think, is there a way we can delay the payment for this tattoo place till February 1st? Is that going to hurt us that bad, to give them a little bit more time? I mean, I, I think they understand, I mean, I know it's only a month, but, you know, $100 can go to supplies or a part of a, you know, utility bill, just something to help them out, but I know they were concerned about it going up, and maybe that's asking too much, but I'm just wondering if we could just do that, just to help out.
Well, I can't give you an answer about that immediately. I can definitely do some research and let you know, but I do think some of these have late fees associated with it. So for example, I know for sure for the food services, if they send their, if their check is postmarked past a certain date, they actually get a 25% fee that the city actually keeps. But I don't know for sure about the tattoo body art. I assume there may be something like that associated with it.
Because we are going to look at this on item number six, correct?
That is on our agenda to vote on this evening. Kami, a question, can you go back to A for a second? I guess it's the risk level for all the
Sure.
restaurants, I believe, and food establishments.
One more past that.
Sure. Sorry about that. Where do you want me to go?
To the first table, I think.
Now, it says, I'm looking at the exhibit 1 attached to the ordinance, it says like $160 plus fee remitted to the state. Is that, I'm looking at the actual ordinance itself, so that, so there's a, there's a pass-through, I guess, something that we collect and it goes to the state.
That is correct.
Then we get 160 plus that pass-through fee.
Yes.
That's way worse.
Yes, that is correct.
And obviously, the more square foot, the more licensing work it is for our Health Department?
I think that's the, the thought about it, that it would be a larger facility, so it would take a little bit longer. As far as square foot, yes.
Mobile food operations, that's, that's your food trucks, basically, I guess, is that correct?
That is correct. Those are locally licensed ones, the ones that are coming out of Hamilton, yes.
So what are we proposing it be for those food trucks?
It's $220 plus the $28 state fee.
Okay.
Per truck.
That was probably not due until the food service wants to do when?
I think they have to have their license applications and payment in by, I think, the end of February, so it's not until after the 1st of the year.
Okay. Okay. I see a lot of the system is driven by the Ohio Revised Code, seems to be a lot of system by that.
Yes, it is.
Any other, does council have any other questions before we ask about any kind of public input that we've received?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Please.
So you used Butler County as a comparison, so we are in Butler County. Can you explain that for the general audience, like, is there a city, a county, and a state fee?
No. So we are one of two health departments that are embedded in Butler County, and so we each operate independently in that regard. And we will license the jurisdictions that are in our locale, and they will, each operation will only pay the one-time, you know, $28 state fee for that license. Does that answer it?
That answers it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions amongst council at this point in time? Okay. City Clerk, did you receive anything by email regarding this public hearing issue?
Nothing that I've already, that I've already shared.
The email that we got last week, then you sent out an email saying what the proposed fee, 350, has been lowered to 300.
That's correct.
Put that into an email to the lady who did the original email. Okay. All right, so there's no, nobody here to speak out in the hallway about this, and nobody else has sent any kind of emails at all, except for the one who sent it like last week?
Yeah, I mean, well, just she, she confirmed or she acknowledged that we had lowered the fees through an email that I received today, but after grabbing the public hearing book before the meeting, I did not see anybody else in the lobby.
For the record, in the public hearing book, I just have Kami Mitrione as the person speaking during the public hearing. Okay, so prior to closing the public hearing, is there, anyone who wants to add any more questions for Kami at all, while we've got the data up there, those have figured out there? Record, there's no one in the audience in this particular chambers, and no one outside, except for Mr. Longman, I guess. Okay, is there a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Okay, we now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. Is there a motion at this time?
Vice Mayor. I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. So go to pending legislation, agenda item number five, which is a second reading of emergency ordinance regarding Sellers Real Estate LLC.
An emergency ordinance authorizing directing the sale of property to Sellers Real Estate LLC relative to certain real property located at parcel number 6462006000073, and ratifying the execution of a sale and development agreement relative to, relative to said property, second reading.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion or comments about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, though.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
And I go to agenda item number six, which involves the license fees about which we had a public hearing. I have a question for the law department, if I could. We just had a presentation about this particular issue, and there were different fees up there than what we had the first time that was read into the record last week. If we want to proceed with the vote tonight, how do we proceed with that, knowing that we now have seen during this proceeding the proposed new fees?
So what is required by the charter is that in advance of this meeting, that council receive a copy of the version that is proposed to be adopted? So the version that you all have before you is revised with the lowered fees? So what you are voting on today is the proposal with the lower fees and not the previous version? So we have, we have not presented two different versions for consideration, only the version with the reduced fees. So there's nothing further that needs to be done.
Okay, so you're saying, I'm a little confused, I was looking for my version, which has the new proposed fees. Do we have a version which has the new proposed fees that were put up on that screen?
Yes, and then they should have a copy.
Does that, does that, then?
Yeah, we do, that copy right here.
All right, I must. All right, so we can actually vote on the second reading of the emergency ordinance based upon what we've already got circulated to us at the table. Okay.
That's correct.
Great.
And I did want to just make, you know, there was a question during the public hearing about the flexibility for fees, and as Kami indicated, they are staggering for various sections, but there is compulsory language in the Ohio Revised Code that does say that if they're not paid within a certain time, there has to be assessed a penalty. So we don't have flexibility to be able to say, you know, you can't pay it in this window, we have to follow the code. So it is staggered for various things, but we don't have the flexibility to be able to waive that. It's all governed by the code, and we don't have local jurisdiction over that.
That's going to be my question. You can't waive the, like, a waive a 25% fee, right?
It, it's in the Ohio Revised Code, and that trumps what we're doing here today.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got before us the one that we had last week, and the one with the proposed lower figures for certain food operations. Okay. I don't think you've read it yet, have you?
I have not.
Please read it.
An emergency ordinance amending sub-paragraphs A through G and I of section 1733.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations, repealing said existing sub-paragraphs, second reading.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I make a motion that that ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Brown. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to go on record for the city administration to recognize the proposed fees, and then to be able to transition those proposed fees to actual that we're voting on this evening. There was a reduction based on, based on sentiment, based on the opportunity for all businesses that have been explained tonight, all the different sections, if you will, whether they're food service operations, tattoo parlors, swimming pools, what have you. It was very responsible for the city to be able to look at those proposed numbers and then say we can modify them and waive some of those a little bit more extraordinary fees to make them more realistic. So again, I wanted to thank everyone for the work that they've accomplished.
That agrees. City administration was responsive to the concerns of businesses as well as the concerns of council. Any other comments at this time involving agenda item number six? Roll call, vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item, under new legislation, agenda item number seven, resolution involving community reinvestment area agreement?
A resolution authorizing directing the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement with Kevin J. Eisen Properties LLC.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Ryan, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number eight, which is also a resolution involving a side lot, 925 Vine Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 925 Vine Street.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Any comments or questions or discussions about this one? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number nine, a resolution also involving a side lot, 224 South C Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 224 South C Street.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Agenda item number 10, also a resolution, also involving a side lot, 126 Handover Street.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 126 Handover Street.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion to Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call, well, any questions about this one? Roll call, vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Audience City Manager? Audience City Council.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I had the honor of attending the Hamilton Veteran Hall of Fame on Sunday afternoon, and I've wanted to take this moment to congratulate Mr. Mayor Mohler and Councilman Nab for your hard work and dedication and making a very memorable event. It was, it was beautiful, it was touching, and it was riveting. So I want to thank you gentlemen for your hard work. You could tell that an event like that was not easy, and I could tell that you guys definitely cared about those folks that were there. So, so thank you, and also to the chamber and Dan Bates for putting a very nice ceremony together, so thank you.
It is a committee which has gotten things done, including the POW MIA Chair of Hamilton High School. It's two Veterans Hall of Fame events. This year's was done very smartly, very safely. Chris Haynes, basically leads us, city employee, and Callahan, city employee, veteran, both those guys are veterans, they help us out, they lead us. Tim's a veteran, I'm just kind of hanging around, trying to get whatever I can do to help out, done. We had an incredible class, please view it on TV Hamilton's Facebook or YouTube, because He spoke today at St. Peter's School, getting in a very safe manner, everybody had masks on, and he did an incredible job describing your experience. We also had Chris Haynes and Jim Williams also speak a little bit, but it was very good for all of us to hear what these veterans went through, and they were Vietnam and Persian Gulf. And Tim also attended at Greymon Cemetery this afternoon early, flags of the fallen Eagle Scout project, ribbon cutting, and it's a gentleman named Xander Roberts, who's a Hamilton High School student, very fond representative of Hamilton High School, fond representative of Navy Junior ROTC. He's going to the Marines, so he wanted to do something special for, for his hometown, so there's now, there's five flags at a reviewing area at Greymon Cemetery, where they have the Memorial Day event each and every year, and a fine young man, and thank you for going along, Tim. It's another fine example of what's going on good in Hamilton. We respect our veterans the right way, we thank them the right way. Anyone else on council, anything they want to say at this time? Okay, executive session, Mr. Senior Andrew.
Yes, sir. Requesting an executive session this evening to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to go to executive session for that stated purpose?
So moved. Second.
Motion to councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Brown. Roll call vote to go to executive session for that stated purpose.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.